All right, Monday, July ninth, two thousand twelve, South Bend County Council, now in session. The invocation by Captain Fred, retired, South Bend County State Representative, and two thirty-two.
God bless everyone. Would you bow your heads? Gracious and kind heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for our coming together in this meeting. We ask that you bless this common council, bless every, uh, member of it, the executive board, the president, each one of them, name by name, oh God, and we ask that you bless our mayor. Touch and bless him right now. Give him direction what to do and how to do it. And everyone now, under the sounds of my voice, touch and bless each one, oh God, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Take control of this meeting, Lord, and we give you the praise for, give you the glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please read the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Present.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Ready to serve.
Ms. Shane?
Here.
Dr. Furless?
Yes.
Dr. Barnum?
Present.
Mr. Oliver Davis?
Present.
Ms. White?
Present.
Mr. Furless?
Here.
Mr. Dieter? Nine present.
May we have a report from the subcommittee, I've been...
To the county council, the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has expected the minutes of the June twenty-fifth, twenty-twelve meeting of the council, and found them to be correct, so therefore we recommend the same we approved. Signed, Garrett Peter and David Barnum.
Make motion to substitute second. The motion is second on favor, aye. Any opposition to that? Thank you. Any special business before this council? You do not have any reports from city offices, or two weeks, and I don't know, have a motion to involve in the committee?
No.
Second, on favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition, you may suggest.
Okay. I'm gonna remain in my seat. Uh, the meet of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing, if it's official. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have already had a first reading and a committee meeting and public hearing prior to tonight's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bills were discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance, if the zoning ordinance, report from a staff member of area plan will be given. At this time, I would ask that second reading be given to bill twelve dash twelve. Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at five oh one South Perry Street, Councilman Annick District four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion that bill twelve dash twelve be amended to grant that our, uh, council attorney will read into record those various amendments.
So move, second.
I will read it into record. Uh, bill twelve twelve, uh, section one, that you would add the following sentence to the end of that section. Said rezoning shall be subject to the written commitment set forth in exhibit A, which is attached here too and included herein.
Thank you, and now would like to entertain a motion to accept amended version as read.
So move, second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Now we'll have our, uh, committee reports.
Yes, Madam Chair, the zoning and amending commission committee members this afternoon and be bringing bill twelve twelve to the full council with a favorable report.
As amended. Thank you. Is there a report, Mayor, of plans?
Chris Paneda with the Area Plan Commission, offices on the eleventh floor. Petitioner is requesting a zone change from the SF two single-family and two-family district to the CB, Community Business District, to allow a garage for auto repair. Uh, this is an aerial view of the site from the south. This is a view of the garage that is currently there, that garage will be taken down and a new one will be, uh, put up in its place. And then this is a view kind of south on the street. Petitioner also owns the house to the south. And then this is the, um, access across Eddie Street. This is the site plan that was presented at the Area Plan Commission after that meeting, that petitioner did make changes and, um, entered in this revised site plan. The overall site is just over seventy-five hundred square feet. They're proposing a one-style garage of just over a thousand square feet that covers fourteen percent of the lot. There will be six parking spaces, and that combined with the drive aisle is twenty-nine square feet, covering thirty percent of the site. There will be residential landscape buffering along the back, um, the north, south, and west, and in front of the building. And the remaining area in the back there is not known whether it's going to be greveled, paved, et cetera. Um, based on this site plan, the petitioner will still need to apply for two variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and those are for the front parking setback and for parking, screening, landscaping in the front. Um, this is the east bank plan, um, that has not been adopted by the Area Plan Commission or the common council, but was, um, mentioned in our comments from the Department of Community and Economic Development, shows this area as a future development opportunity. To the north are three single-family homes, zoned, single-family and two-family districts, and a storage lot for the Robert Henry Corporation. To the northwest is the Robert Henry Corporation zoned LI light industrial district. To the east across Perry Street, fronting on Eddie Street, are several businesses like a dance school, car repair business, zoned mixed-use district. To the south are more single-family homes and the Marine Corps league, all zoned SF two, single-family and two-family districts. Uh, we received two letters, one in favor and one in opposition, and at the public hearing, historic preservation spoke in opposition. Based, uh, this commissary was an unfavorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. However, since the last committee meeting, there was a meeting between, uh, the committee chair, Oliver Davis, myself, uh, the petitioner, petitioner's son, uh, um, Scott Ford from Community and Economic Development, and Captain House Sutter from, um, Historic Preservation. And from that meeting is what came out the, um, written commitments that are the amendments to the ordinance.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions at, at this time? Thank you so much. Is there anyone present wishing to speak? Petitioner, I'm sorry. Petitioner, will you please at some point state your name and address, and give us a brief summary of amended version of the bill as before?
My name is Hugh Tang Phillips. Uh, I live at five oh nine South Perry Street, uh, next door to five oh one South Perry Street. And, uh, I'd like to have this petition re- property rezoned so that, uh, I could put up a small garage that be independent, so that my kids graduate from Mardi Chèques, from my clients, he's been working on cars a while, so he has his socials degree in it, and he can start and learn how to operate a business. And maybe at a later date, he can get a full-size garage.
Thank you. Are there any questions that council members may have of petitioner? Thank you so much, appreciate your comment. At this time, if we'll move to the public hearing portion, is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of amended version of bill twelve dash twelve? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing now is closed, would I entertain a motion?
Move for favor recommendation, second.
Has been moved and seconded, that, um, amended version of bill twelve dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. All those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Would now like to entertain a motion regarding bill twenty dash twelve.
Will the twenty twelve be continued to seven twenty-three, uh, as amended?
And again, if this person said that it should not have appeared on the agenda.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Would now like to entertain a motion regarding bill twenty-one dash twelve.
Will the motion continue to seven twenty-three, second?
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Would like to make a motion to continue twenty-four twelve to seven twenty-three, second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Would now like to give second reading to substitute bill twenty-eight dash twelve. Ms. Cavill?
Public hearing on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter thirteen, article five, section thirteen dash seven five point five, disorderly houses prohibited by the inclusion of new paragraph L, M, and N to paragraph A, five of the South Bend municipal code.
Make motion here to substitute version, second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Would now like to entertain a report from the committee, Health and Public Safety Committee. Committee report, Dr. Furless?
Uh, committee, uh, report, uh, was that we reached a favorable conclusion?
Thank you so much.
Recommendations, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. At this time, we do have petitioner, where would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Tim Scott, seven eleven Forest Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
To give us a summary of the substitute version of bill twenty-eight dash twelve.
Sure, um, what this does is help strengthen our, um, disorderly house ordinance. Um, it actually holds people, uh, persons holding legal, equitable title in real estate and occupants are held responsible for the conduct occurring upon the premises and would be held jointly and severe, and severely liable for any fines related to prostitution in violation, patronizing a prostitute, promoting prostitution, uh, criminal gang activity in violation, criminal gang intimidation, criminal gang recruitment, and, uh, violations, uh, of any of the following Indiana statutes covering basically drugs, cocaine, narcotics, methamphetamines, uh, controlled substances, and marijuana and hash. So basically, what we're doing is strengthening our, our disorderly house.
House member Scott, we use the enforcement, the enforcement of legal and, uh, code enforcement as well?
Yes, both, um, legal, who's here right now and can speak on that behalf, uh, and Carol Nash from, uh, the legal department is in favor of this, also for code enforcement, runs across this on a regular basis, and they are both for this as well.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Thank you so much. I'm gonna ask them to come up here. At this time, if, uh, legal from the administration would like to come and share your comments in regards to the enforcement or any other areas that you would like to make mention regarding this particular subject?
Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of Aunt Carol Nash, the Assistant City Attorney, who, um, enforces the disorderly house and the drug house ordinances. And, uh, according to Aunt Carol Nash, this is a welcome change to the code. So she's, she's comfortable with it and, and we think it will help.
Thank you. Any questions, council members, that you may have? Thank you so much. At this time, if there's no one else speaking from the administration, we'll move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of substitute bill twenty-eight dash twelve? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed. Council member, dear Dieter?
I, I would have a question that's for, uh, Chief of Staff, who, after this, if I'm assuming that it passes, would you be the one that would be in charge of sending something to the police department? Like we talked about, uh, coming up with a database, if we can get together on that, so, okay.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council members? If now, if not, I would like to entertain a motion regarding this bill.
I'll move it for a favorable recommendation of the substitute version of twenty-eight twelve.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Substitute bill twenty-eight dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Will you now give second reading to bill twenty-seven dash twelve, Mrs. Cavill?
Public hearing on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, transferring twenty thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars within general fund number one oh one from a Department of Administration and Finance account to an office rental account in the South Bend Human Rights Division.
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a public hearing on bill twenty-seven dash twelve, and we send this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation. At this time, if the petitioner is present, we do ask that you come to the podium since your name and address, and give us a summary of this particular bill.
Good evening, council. Mark Neal, uh, city controller, offices on the twelfth floor of this building. Um, the, uh, bill twenty-seven twelve is requesting twenty thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is, uh, an amount that represents five and a half months rental payments, assuming a maximum of three thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars a month, uh, lease payment, rather for property of three nineteen Niles Avenue, to be the, uh, new offices for the Human Rights Commission. Uh, the, uh, amount is a not-to-exceed amount. Uh, we've been, uh, we've been in negotiations for onwards of, uh, five months with the owners. Uh, we would expect the amount to ultimately be lower than that, uh, but, uh, not wanting to come back and, and bother you a second time, uh, we've asked that, uh, we're asking for this, not not-to-exceed for this period of time.
Are there any questions? Council member Shane?
Sure, um, uh, thank you, Mark, and the team for preparing the information that you have. Um, I have, uh, asked questions. Mark, uh, you, uh, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate, reiterate some of the points that we had previously discussed. Last week, I had sent to everyone some, uh, properties that I thought, um, were to be equally suitable, uh, for lots of money, which of course would be something that we would all want to, to look at. And, um, you had explained to me, uh, a little while ago about some of the things that maybe those of us not in commercial real estate wouldn't understand. Um, so I'm just going to ask because, uh, the one I had highlighted was in the, um, Plaza, and, um, I, I did not understand the NNN term and the ten dollars per square foot and the implications. So if you wouldn't mind, I now have a better understanding, could you share that with others?
Sure. And again, uh, Councilor Shane, I'll apologize that I did not provide you better information originally with this request. Uh, we, uh, the, the Human Rights Commission has six full-time employees. The building that they're currently in Howard Park is three thousand square feet, using, if you look at all three floors, approximately three thousand feet. So the new space that we're looking at is also approximately three thousand square feet. Uh, the payment that we're making, this, uh, monthly amount is consisting of a base rental fee of five dollars, a common area maintenance fee of five dollars and seventy-five cents, and then approximately additional three dollars and forty-seven cents, uh, for leasehold improvements. Uh, that's the square footage cost on a monthly basis, totaling fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Uh, with that, we would be paying off the leasehold improvements within, within, in five years, and the rent would then go to ten dollars and seventy-five cents, uh, per month, per square foot. Uh, the properties that you had, had identified, uh, were also competitive properties in the area. Um, they did come with, uh, uh, higher base rents of ten dollars for the property on, on one thirty South Bank Street, and then fifteen fifty for the property at three forty Columbia Place. Neither of those, though, had quoted the, the common area maintenance fee or any cost that might be associated with us providing leasehold improvements. So we're confident that the property that we've identified here, that is publicly held property, is in fact an amount lower than those, uh, rental rates would be if we were to pursue those properties, or, or quite honestly, other properties in the area. This is a, uh, this is a likely Class B property. It's being rented at a fairly reasonable rate. We certainly would say it's at or below market. Uh, but, uh, we think it's competitively priced, uh, for the area, and therefore that's why we've, uh, uh, solicited your approval for this, uh, amount, for this property.
And just for the benefit of others, um, the lease type, do you know what the NNN stands for?
Right, and the property itself, main, it's, uh, it's what's referenced is it's a ten dollar per square foot base charge, and then it's a triple net lease. Uh, triple net, uh, is, uh, would require the, the let fee to pay all costs associated with, uh, anything related to maintenance of the building, uh, common insurance costs that would be associated with, including oftentimes boiler and, boiler responsibilities, machinery responsibilities, as well as just painting and, and snow removal, lawn maintenance, that kind of thing. So consequently, it would be a much higher rate.
Thank you. Council member Henry Davis?
Uh, you were in negotiations with the owners. Who are the owners?
Um, we're going, we're going through, uh, Christian Davey of, uh, of CBRE.
I'm sorry?
Uh, we're going, we're working with, uh, we're working with a broker. We, we've hired, we've hired a broker to help us identify property, and, uh, they're, uh, we're working again through another broker who's brokering the property on behalf of the owner.
So who's the owner?
Um, uh, Councilor Davis, I actually don't know the, the owner of the property.
Is there any way we can find out?
Oh, yes, absolutely we could. I apologize, they don't have that information available.
Any other questions? From council members? Thank you. At this time, uh, we'll ask, um...
Uh, the, the, the city attorney, Eldon Rose, is telling me that the owner in name is three oh nine Niles LLC is the property owner.
Okay, let, let's go.
I know that's not what you're, I know that's not what you're asking for, but that's, I understand that.
Does, does Braxton take on that building?
Actually, I do not know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay. I just want to cut to the chase, I was just trying to be nice about it, so...
Pardon me?
I was really trying to be nice about it, but, uh, from understanding, he owns the building.
Okay.
And I was just looking at some of the conflicts that may cause with him doing a lot of business with the city, and amount of, uh, rent that we pay out to Mr. Toothacheers, or even CB Richard Ellis. It almost, uh, looks like that we, uh, participate with CB Richard Ellis in a way that could essentially, uh, challenge the integrity of the city. And I was, uh, really interested in finding out if that was the case. And if that is the case, we need to look at how much time and money that we spend with Mr. Toothacheers so we don't make, don't look like that we're just being overbearing or, or overly help, helpful or, or excited to help out Mr. Toothacheer's business.
Um...
That's why I asked that question.
Uh, fair enough, fair enough, I, I recognize that.
So, when, when we have opportunity, can we please find out, uh, who owns that building?
And that's for one.
Outside three oh nine Niles Avenue LLC. I'm sure we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Council member, um...
Can I just, I have a little question, if Mr. Toothacheer is owner of that? If he is the owner of that?
Huh?
Yeah, yeah. Can we find out if he is the owner of that?
Yes.
Do you want to follow up on that, or?
Yeah, I want to find out who owns the building. I figure that is necessary. Uh, i-if we're going to be in this city that is twenty-first century and we're going to be helpful to all classes of people, MBE, WWE, we're excited to spread the wealth and re-divide the pie, I don't think that, uh, we should stop short of commercial buildings and paying rent to a person that, you know, probably owns most of the real estate downtown, if he owns this building, and continue to do business like that with Mr. Toothacheer or CB Richard Ellis as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, are there any other questions from council members? If not, we'll move to the public hearing portion. Uh, is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of bill twenty-seven dash twelve? If so, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Lonnie Douglas, and I live at three oh, well, I don't live, I work at three oh one South St. Louis, here in the city. I'm the director of the South Bend Human Rights Commission. And I rose to urge the council to please pass this bill. I urge you also to please come over and visit the South Bend Human Rights Commission at three oh one South St. Louis, and get an inkling as to how that building stacks up against the rest of the employees that work for the city of South Bend, and how those people are working under circumstances that are not as good as the circumstances in this building. Having resided in this building over ten years ago, we voluntarily left to allow expansion for other departments so that there would be no problem for them to expand, with the promise that, um, we would also be able to have the proper building and, um, the proper etiquette to meet and greet our clients. We serve lower-income clients. Those clients need to know that they're receiving the best that they can get from the city of South Bend, as well as everyone else that enters one of our offices. Our office, in present, is declining. The air conditioning is, is at best, sorry, uh, and our heating system, uh, is adequate, to say the least. Uh, there is no, uh, insulation in the roofing of the building, and we have two people working upstairs in that heat. We would like to see us move because it's the right thing to do. How can we greet citizens of South Bend and say to them, "Welcome to the city of South Bend", when our intake officer has an office that has taped-up wallpaper and holes in the ceiling? I challenge you to find an office in this building that has the same. We represent equal opportunity, yet somehow I feel that we're not being equally housed. We also represent equal housing, and it's imperative, if we're to keep our contracts with the US Department of HUD, that we upgrade our status as far as where we're being housed. It is imperative that the city look good to HUD, because a lot of HUD dollars comes into this city. We're about to be quote-unquote, "looked at" by HUD again this year, and we'd like to be able to tell them we have made arrangements to move to a better place. It has been brought up on a number of occasions. The, um, facility is just not adequate for what we do. We're on three different floors, which means that for those that are disabled, it's very difficult, if you have a housing problem, to even see the housing, uh, personnel because they're downstairs in the basement. If you have an employment problem, you have to go upstairs to the heat. We're looking to get on one floor so that everyone can move about freely. We only have one bathroom on the, on the main floor, and that's a handicapped accessible bathroom, which prohibits us from using our conference room, because that conference room also houses the bathroom that's, uh, accessible. And the building itself is not totally accessible, so it's mandatory that we do something. And I was told it would cost in excess of two hundred thousand dollars to bring it up to code. And we're not looking to ask the city for that kind of money, but we are looking to ask the city. Please vote favorably for this bill and make sure that the Human Rights Commission represents the city as well as every other department. I thank you.
Thank you so much. Council member Shane?
Uh, Mr. Douglas, thank you, and, um, please know that we, uh, I think we all, uh, value the work of the Human Rights Commission, but, um, the, the debate has been centered around, um, trying to, uh, make a, um, wide choice on behalf of the taxpayers. Um, we want to make sure that we're, um, providing your, uh, team the, uh, best accommodations that we can. Um, we, this has been very, um, judicious, judicious about the, um, the cost. So, um, please bear in mind that that's what the debate has been centered around, not that we don't value very much the work that you and your team, but...
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak on behalf of bill twenty-seven dash twelve? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed, would like to move to council? Any council member, Davis?
Um, sure, um, three things. The only reason why I'm voting for this bill is because I don't think any worker should be under those circum, uh, working those type of conditions. I'm sure it was miserable in there over the last several days with the hundred-degree-plus weather that was going on. And I, again, I don't believe in anyone working in those type of conditions. I don't care who you are, or where you came from. That's one of the only reasons why I'm voting for this bill. Outside of that, I think it's up to the administration and their responsibility to find adequate space in front of the city departments. I don't think we're short of city property that we own. And I think that we could have done a better job in locating a property or office space for the Human Rights Commission well before we got to this point. It's almost a forced fee situation right now, and we're putting this up against the employees. And I'm gonna always go for the employees. So I'm gonna support the bill because their employees, they work hard, but I don't support the way this is handled. And I think that the administration, on down to the departments, need to, uh, be mindful of mono, of space and real estate that we own here in South Bend, Indiana. As a matter of fact, I've already asked for an audit during, during the sessions of, uh, budget so we'll find out how many properties that we really actually own. Because there's more than those properties that showed up on the official paper. I've done a Google search myself and found more than was presented earlier today. Uh, the other deal is that I think that the Human Rights Commission deserves more as well. So we just now only give them new office space, allow them to go countywide. They handle issues from people from Mitchell Walker, from all over the county. And they come to South Bend and bring us to South Bend. And they come to South Bend and bring us to South Bend and they're getting paid by South Bend. I think they should probably get paid by South Bend, the city Mission Walkers, and the county council as well. So there needs to be a conversation between the three governmental bodies so that they can stretch their arms and spread their wings and also be conversational for the work that they do. Because they just only handle South Bend complaints and I'm going to assume and I'm probably going to bet this one as well, that they probably deal with more issues outside of South Bend rather than South Bend. I'm going, I'm going to go on that limb because I've been here for a while and I know this to be true. So I think that we need really make an approach to make us go countywide rather than citywide because I don't think that we shouldn't continue to have to split the deal for outside areas. We do it all the time. So now it's time for those outside areas to pony up their dollars and to make sure that that division is well-resourced and supplied adequately. I don't think that that's fair and I think that that's wrong. So employees should be valued more than that.
Thank you, councilmember Davis. Your three points are so noted and I'm quite sure that through the committee structure and others that we will continue engaging these questions and during the budget process as well. Councilmember Davis?
Uh, thank you, councilmember Douglas. Uh, Mr. Douglas, uh, like on behalf of at least myself, um, representing the city, I'm sorry that your promise that you were given has had to take so long. It's been over the 10 years from just being in those conditions and it's really a travesty that I said you have sent you in that kind of a position for that long. And I do concur with Councilman Davis that the discussions, hopefully from our mayor, President Rockford Morton, who is the president of the Mission Walkers Council, the mayor, um, would, um, all of those would come together to have a discussion of how we can really expand our services. Because I believe, and I do recognize, the majority according to what our city attorney said, so many of the calls come from all over, over, what, over a thousand calls a year. And so you can see that if about a hundred percent of those cases are identified, that we're getting calls from all over. And so therefore, um, it just does help us when we can really expand. And many of our members, uh, cities residents who are here or working in different places or whatever, we go back and forth to Mission Walker. And Mission Walker comes back and forth to turn it up all the time. So it just makes sense to, um, follow along with the council, Councilman Davis, regarding that. So I'm looking forward to going for this so you can move forward and have the American League to have better quality.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Remove the favorable recommendation.
To move in second. And all those in favor of the motion, I hear your votes? Those opposed, the motion carries. Bill 27-12 would be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. It will now maintain a motion arising from the opposed. To move in second. All those in favor or motion carries.
Well, councilor, I'm setting the third ring and call call, please.
Third reading on the bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 501 South Terry Street, Councilman Annecity Corrigan, the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move to the passage.
Amend it, let's see.
Will we amend 12th clause if it wasn't clear at all?
Thank you.
In favor?
Aye.
Any other additions?
No.
Oh, no. End of call.
Move to the passage of 12th clause amended.
Second amendment. Please.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furlic?
Aye.
Dr. Varnas?
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Third reading on the bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 13, article 5, section 13, dash, seven, five, point, five, disorderly houses prohibited by the inclusion of a new sub-paragraphs L, M, and N, paragraph A, five of the South Bend municipal code.
Amend it, let's see.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
In opposition? Now, the recommendation for the amended version?
Move to the passage of amended version 2012.
Second.
Please.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furlic?
Aye.
Dr. Varnas?
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Third reading on the bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, transferring $20,625 within general fund number 101 from a Department of Administration and Finance account to an office rental account in the South Bend Human Rights Division.
Move to the passage of 2712.
Second. Please.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furlic?
Aye.
Dr. Varnas?
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Twelve forty-seven, please.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, determining after investigation that the lease of property at 319 Niles Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, is necessary for use of general office space.
Committee report.
Yes, the first round finance committee held a public hearing committee meeting on this bill, substitute 1247, we sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Presenting, please.
Hi, my name is Aladine DeRose. I'm interim city attorney for South Bend with offices on the 14th floor of this building. This bill, as you understand and know, is a companion to 12, to 2712, which you just passed. This is the resolution that's required as a matter of law. It's basically a finding on your part that a lease of this property is necessary for the South Bend Human Rights Commission. And I think, Mr. Davis, I mean, I'm sorry, Lonnie Douglas, Mr. Douglas eloquently spoke earlier about the need for the Human Rights Commission's new space, but I will elaborate on that just a little bit from a legal standpoint. The Human Rights Commission investigates charges of discrimination in housing under law. Nine members of the, there is a nine-member commission, two of whom are disabled. The commission serves also in a quasi judicial capacity, meaning that it's somewhat like a court. It holds reconsideration hearings about once a month, public hearings two to three, four times a year, and of course, the public meetings of the Human Rights Commission each month. The clients of the, of the Human Rights Commission are the, are generally low-income. They generally do not have transportation. And it is essential that there be a good functioning conference room in which the necessary public hearings that require confidentiality and privacy are held. Those who have claims of discrimination, their, their claims are protected as a matter of federal law. The Human Rights Commission cannot release any information about investigations, so the privacy of those who have claims, who may be in vulnerable positions is essential. With that in mind then, there become, there are five distinct requirements of the Human Rights Commission. And I say distinct because they're unlike any of, any other department. And one that the, that it be a totally ADA accessible facility because we hear cases of those with disabilities and because members of the commission themselves are disabled. It needs to be on a first floor for the same reasons. It needs to be a place that enhances the privacy of, of individuals who are the clients of the commission. And it needs to be on a public transportation route with parking facilities. All of those requirements are met with the space that has been identified here. And the other, the other components of the Human Rights Commission is that it hears, that it receives about a thousand inquiries a year, of which about 100 turn into actual cases that are worked on involving witnesses and, and clients. So for those reasons, I think it, well, for those reasons, it's clear that a finding that a new facility is necessary in addition to all of the problems that are with the space as it presently constitutes. Thank you.
Any questions?
How would a new location be marketed? How would a new location be marketed? How would people know to find you and find us, the Human Rights Commission, on Niles Avenue?
I'm sorry, would the Human Rights Commission have, have those needs, the needs that I identified and we, and I understand?
No, you didn't hear me, I'm sorry. How would the, the rest of the world know that the Human Rights Commission has relocated to Niles Avenue?
Uh, we will probably...
I'm sorry.
The Department of HUD has given us an $80,000 grant to do education outreach. Part of that grant will be utilized to advertise via billboards, television spots, newspaper spots, that the Human Rights Commission is moving and where we will relocate it and how acceptable we will be.
Are you going to use a total $80,000 grant for its marketing purposes? I, I didn't know anything about an $80,000 grant.
The grant is given to us threefold. One is the council passed the sexual orientation law ordinance, which we will be also marketing in terms of making people aware of that. Secondly, housing in general and that we investigate housing in terms of landlords as well as homeowners. And thirdly, to announce that we are moving.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, what Lonnie has, what Lonnie's mentioned leads to another point, that much of the funding for the Human Rights Commission is provided by grants from the EEOC and from the Housing, Urban Development, Department of Federal Government.
Could you clarify, was that $80,000 or $80,000?
It was $80,000. $80,000.
That's a lot of money.
Word's got to get out.
And I'm sorry, you know what? I made a mistake when I identified the owner of the building. It's 319 Niles Avenue.
All right, anyone who wants to speak in favor of this? Apposition? Council? Look for the adoption of the petition.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in second.
Dr. Fred Furlic?
Aye.
Dr. Varnas?
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Twelve fifty.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, requesting that downtown South Bend be reaffirmed as a top priority for creative and sustainable revitalization, that all possible grant opportunities be pursued, and that Chase Tower be addressed.
Thank you. We've already received a committee meeting and the forum of council discussed.
Yes, they were, President Dieter, and the committee sent this to council with a favorable recommendation.
Mr.?
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Uh, this resolution right now, and I'm going to maintain my seat, is to promote, uh, south, downtown South Bend. Many of us have been, have been asking for a plan for downtown area. And as you see, the, the Riverfront Development was passed through and this is an addition to the Riverfront Development, so you're looking at now adding the Main Street Initiative that the city has given enough designation to do back in 2010. Uh, it's not merely a Main Street Initiative plan, but it is a plan to help us encourage business revitalization, restoration of downtown areas for season towns. Some are designed, some are organized, some are promoted, some are economic restructuring through this grant. So within this resolution, we are asking that the downtown South Bend crew, Mr. Aaron Perry and company, will go ahead and sell out an application to help promote downtown by helping out with the aside grants and different things that are available to us per the state of Indiana. I think it would be a good fit. I think it will help improve downtown. I think it will enhance the viability of downtown along with the Riverfront as well. Uh, the second part of this resolution has everything to do with the Chase Tower, as this has been a story since last, October, last, last September, actually. And as we have not heard a lot from the administration concerning this matter, I, I stand to believe and think that we have a lot to gain and also to lose in this situation. So in talking with a couple guys who thought that they wanted to buy the building, we've come to understand today that there has been a bid accepted, which doesn't mean that the building has been sold, but there did have been accepted in such a way that they can follow along down the path of hopefully acquiring a building. So nothing is said, but a bid has been accepted. Um, the other part of this is that if a bid doesn't, uh, set the course and obviously gets accepted in such a way the building is sold, I think that we have a couple stakes in this that we can move forward. Um, I have a, just some, a couple solutions. Uh, may not be to the administration's liking, however their solution. Uh, the interest part is in not having incentives, some obviously lower the price for someone to purchase the property. The receiver is making money managing this thing for a long time and the bank has already classified its loans and taken all its lease money to reduce the bank's book balance in order to lessen the ultimate charge off or create a bigger recovery. They also know if we continue on down this path and they hold out longer, we will probably end up mailing them out and that's costing the conversation a pass. However, uh, the building exists and continues to exist in the poor fashion. The city could take some legal paths. Um, the price could simply be reduced by repair costs. You could do this in and through the negotiation to a way. Property taxes, the property taxes, the last time we went to property taxes, they were way behind. And this property should not be exempt from any other property that, that we have to deal with in the city. But if they do not pay it, it could go to tax sale. Um, I, uh, this should be no different. The city could pay the taxes and bring it to current and the best of buying the property or the city buying the property, all of these are good outcomes. So we're injecting ourselves into the, in the run for the building. If the city is on the property, then the, the city could finally be the one who says to the prospective buyer, "We want, we won't, we won't fund them for some million of the repair costs, but we would do that much far as dropping some of the cost for taxes." And that's the conversation we have with the county session. We could also go into the condemnation route. Um, that's heavy-handed, just kind of brash. However, we have pieces of concrete falling off the facade. And any other place that you go with this type of situation, certainly they may call for condemnation. Either or, uh, we have a couple viable solutions. Um, I'm just asking that we move forward if this particular bid doesn't win out on trying to make sure that this building stays a viable part of downtown. Uh, I've said it earlier that I think that this building is too big to fail. I would hate to see this building not exist. I would hate to see more businesses leave out. I think we've had a number of businesses who have already left out since the last debacle that we had this past winter. And so I'm just really looking forward to working with the administration, whomever, to make sure that we are in constant talks with the receiver and also the bank. And now Mr. Small provided us with some information earlier today during the subcommittee about some of the conversations he's had with the receiver and also someone I've also forwarded over to him as well. So I think that we have to a minimum done something, but I think that we could do a lot more by injecting ourselves into it to make sure that this building stays in the forefront and as a priority for downtown area. Councilmembers, I ask that you, um, about this, full acclamation.
Mr. Davis, President Dieter, um, Councilmember Davis, you are also sharing in your thoughts that part of your discussions you would like to include the county, the county leadership in them regarding the taxes. You have discussed that.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that will be a fair conversation. I mean, because I, again, it's with the judge, let's be clear, it's in the courts, but I, I think that we have a, a way of, of talking and adding some of our comments into the conversation about the, the building itself and what we are probably willing to do to make it, to sell more attractus.
So far that makes it a sell of practice, and some from the administration, again, some wording that these are kind of things that could be suggested.
Legally, I think that we have the ability to do it. I mean, there's a number of terms upstairs. We have our own. I think that we can make sure that something like that could take place.
All right. Thank you. Mr.?
I certainly support the resolution with the caveat that this is a private enterprise matter and I don't want...
enterprise matter and I don't want the taxpayer to be stuck with the major cost of this, with either renovation or any other, uh, rebuild. I support the general overall resolution in the same, uh, to try to find a solution to this. But I think it, the question's going to be at what price for the taxpayer.
Well, how fair is it when some of the businesses that are in the building pay taxes? So.
So, that's up to them.
What, what I'm saying is that you're saying being fair to the taxpayer, businesses are taxpayers. So, when we wanna have this conversation, we need to be clear about who pays taxes and who don't pay taxes. And I'm gonna probably guess, businesses probably pay a fair, fair share of taxes or their fair share of taxes. Payrolls, property taxes and whatever taxes get taxed on, that's why you have the, uh, the state mandate with the House Bill, uh, Ten of Zero One, tapping property taxes at certain levels because people are paying a lot of taxes. And here in St. Joe County, we tend to have another added tax to the, uh, deal with the lower increase that makes it even more, uh, difficult for business owners around here. So, when we're talking about taxes, let's talk about it clearly in, 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 in such a way that we all understand. Uh, people that own businesses pay taxes and so do their workers.
I think, um, I would encourage that, uh, one of the things I liked about this, um, resolution, um, from Mr. Davis, that, um, he puts all the options that we can and it allows that the administration can work along with them. Um, I don't think it's time for us to restrict anything at this present time because so many things are still being out there and, um, let's just go with it and see where we are. But I, um, that's this conversation with the administration, working with the county, let's see where we are and see how this, this whole thing turns out before we, when we're out. Is any other further questions? Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Opposition? Council? Look for the adoption of, of Bill twelve sixty?
Second. Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Furwick?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Jay?
Aye.
Dr. Furwick?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Twelve sixty-one?
A resolution of the County Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana approving the contractual services agreement subject to budgetary appropriations for the diversity compliance officer.
Senator Report?
Personnel finance hel- held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill twelve dash sixty-one. We sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, presenter.
Yes, I would like to say that on May ninth, I filed a cover letter with the first resolution addressing the WBE and MBE utilization board's recommendation for a diversity compliance officer. The attached resolution that is before us is the second step to finalize the contractual arrangements for the diversity compliance officer contractual services. The resolution sets forth many, um, expectations as well as, um, timeframe and, uh, dollar amount for this particular contractual agreement. I would ask that you, um, give this particular resolution your full support. Would like to also make mention during the committee meeting this afternoon that council members, um, Davis had, um, outlined a number of concerns regarding operational procedural issues in terms of the diversity board itself as well as looking at, uh, some of, um, issues and concerns to make sure that as we move forward with our, um, diversity officer in terms of professional service agreement, that we have clarity in regards to expectations, relationships with, um, board, with the council and with the administration. So, I wanted to make sure that those concerns will be part of the record as well. I ask for your full support of this particular resolution at this particular time.
Very much. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, Karen, I, uh, Councilwoman White, I, um, my understanding of, of this initiative was that we would be hiring a consulting company to train us, um, and then we would be hiring an employee, an in-house employee to be our diversity officer. Will we, uh, so I guess I'm a little confused because I, I had thought that we can hire this company to train, um, an in-house employee.
The purpose of the firm at this particular time is to not only work with, uh, the diversity board, to, uh, develop a diversity realization plan based on their expertise, but also to work with administration. The goal ultimately would be to have an, uh, uh, compliance officer that would be part of the administration. But at this point, we did not have the expertise and as, um, ordinance was written, the ordinance was written, written to really begin to look at, um, having someone who's had, uh, in-depth experience in this type of work. But I do believe that the goal ultimately would be to move in that particular direction.
So, just to, to clear this, so do you foresee that, um, for the, the three years we are looking at here, or I should say two and a half years, the, um, diversity compliance officers for the City of South Bend will be a contracted employee and then at the end, it will be an in-house employee?
I think that that level of discussion and ultimate decision would come from the council as well as from the administration and the recommendations coming from the, the diversity firm. The ordinance that is before us, if you see that it was written in terms of three years, but it's only a one-year, uh, contract agreement from a financial perspective. Uh, from a budget, uh, planning perspective, it was written for three years, but each year, this particular, uh, resolution and this particular, uh, initiative, we have to come back to the council for approval and we will be receiving various, uh, reports, updates, uh, the board will be, um, I'm sorry, the firm will be, uh, in South Bend on Monday. And the goal is that, uh, the firm will have opportunity to not only meet with the diversity board itself but also with the council as well, this coming Monday, we'll be receiving information at that time. Uh, I would encourage, uh, all of us to go back and read through the ordinance. One of the areas that not only the firm has raised some questions, but also, uh, council members, is that we probably need to work through that ordinance and really maybe make some amendments to it as we move forward. But again, I would invite all the council members to come on Monday and the firm will be, uh, sharing as well as listening, getting feedback from not only the diversity board, but also from council members at that time.
Um, Mr. President, I don't need your mind.
At my charge.
Thank you. So, eventually the goal would be that it'll be a staff person.
I, I think that's safe to say, yes.
Any other questions?
No problem. I just wanna clarify some of the, some of the materials. The meeting on Monday is where and what is that, five thirty?
Five thirty and in the past, we've met, uh, in the council, uh, conference room, but the last two meetings, because we were meeting, it, it, those meetings have been held on the thirteenth floor. But usually they're held back here in the council conference. We may need to have a bigger room, I don't know.
Okay. Anyone like to speak in favor of this?
This coming Monday.
President Dieter?
Yes.
Uh, before I make my motion, I wanna make sure, uh, now, the points that we made, I don't know if you just, uh, alluded to, uh, how will we get those, uh, questions, um, who, who are those questions going from? I mean, it's not all, but at the council level. Like, is it gonna be copied to the board and the board president, is it gonna be copied to the administration, also to the consultant?
All three.
All three?
Yeah, all three.
Alright, I just wanna make sure, uh, that we all, everybody is clear on what's going on.
And then the goal of that too, uh, that I ask council members to submit their questions and, uh, any concerns by privacy of this week so that the firm and us perhaps have opportunity to really gather any information if needed.
Good job. I would like to, um, move that, uh, twelve sixty-one, those to the full council, be adopted by the full council.
Second.
Thank you.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
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 Mr. Furwick?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Jay?
Aye.
Dr. Furwick?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
President Dieter? Nine ayes.
Thank you, first reading, twenty-nine, twelve.
First reading on a bill to vacate the following described property. The first north-south alley west of Michigan Street from Madison Street north to the first east-west alley and the first east-west alley north of Madison Street beginning six feet west of the first north-south alley west of Michigan Street to the west Michigan Street right of way.
Who is playing on the bill, it's about the first property vacation that is set for second, third reading and public hearing on seven twenty-three?
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition, thank you, thirty-twelve, please.
First reading on a bill of the County Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana appropriating an additional one hundred thousand in City General Fund Number One Oh One Code Enforcement Department for illegal dumping of cleanup activities to be performed by Solid Waste Department and reimbursed from General Fund Number One Oh One to Solid Waste Operating Fund Six Ten in two thousand and twelve.
On the thirty-twelve, we sent personnel to the committee, we sent the second, third reading on South Bend, seventy-three.
Second. I have a motion to second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
And the opposition, thank you very much. Thirty-one, twelve.
First reading on a bill to vacate the following described property, property. The first east-west alley north of West South Street from Hill Street West to the first north-south alley.
On the thirty-one, all because the public works to property vacation, maybe be set for second, third reading and public hearing on seven twenty-three.
Second. I have a motion to second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
And the opposition. Any unfinished business before this council is started?
What, second time, Mr. President Dieter? Sure. I'm messing. Uh, look, really quick, and I'm being very lighthearted, um, the downtown resolution, I've, uh, I've neglected to even bring this up, but I wanna bring it up now, so I don't know who to bring it to. Uh, I'm gonna have meetings with the Robinson Apartments, residents in the Robinson Apartments. Uh, they complain a lot about people crossing over the, uh, the crosswalk line, uh, in their cars, which impedes their progress across the street, allowing them on walkers or in motorized, uh, wheelchairs. So, hopefully with the substation, some of those things can be, uh, looked at, uh, with the police presence being downtown and people proceeding into the crosswalk when people could be crossing, uh, the opposite way. Also, some of the cars in are not handicap accessible, a lot of them you have to step upon. So, I think it needs to be an evaluation of downtown area on where, uh, we do not have access, handicap access, uh, uh, downtown. Uh, there's a one curb in particular that I keep hearing about and I've seen it just directly across the street from the Marriott, it's on the corner of, uh, St. Joe and that's Coldfax, that will be the, uh, southeast corner. And that curb is like extremely li, uh, high. And I've, uh, spoken with the Robinson Apartment residents and they are really adamant about getting those things taken care of, because we're gonna have our senior downtown when we take care of them. So, I don't know, uh, is that a matter of a public works discussion? I don't know, Mayor Booty Judge, if you wanna do anything about it, I mean, ultimately it ends up in your lap anyway, but, uh, I think that needs to be really looked at, uh, sooner than later.
I can address that to start with, I think the signage and the, and the painting of the curbs are there because I seen firsthand, some of the people I know in wheelchairs, instead of going to the corner, ooh, just right in the middle of the street. And I, I've talked to, I've talked to a lot of those people, so I think we can go down there and check that, but I know the signage and the street things are there, but I think the issue is, they just wanna shoot right across the street instead of going to the corner, which is much safer on, on that side. I know that it's a curb you're talking about, but that is.
We've got all of them, make sure they're all, uh, up to, what is it, ADA standards? Is what we've been talking about? I'm sorry. Okay, and the last thing, I just wanna make, uh, mention of this, and I, and I'm, I'm really serious about this, uh, public pools. South Bend, uh, we have one and we have some sort of, I guess, water park for smaller kids. Um, I was really just, uh, I, I was saddened, you know, this past several days, I mean, it was extremely hot outside, to see the amount of children that were on the west side of the river. Not the west side, the west side of the river, not having access to a, a, a pool when the east side of the river had access to the pool. And I said that they can't get on buses and travel across city. But what I am saying is that, uh, if we're gonna be classified as a twenty-first century city, we need to be able to have the same resources for one side of the river and also the other side of the river. I think all of, all of the children, uh, obviously expect more and we should value them in such a way. I think they came in here from the bar and they talked about playground equipment and how they don't have the playground equipment they were looking forward to, uh, due to the fire and insurance claim. So, I think that if we're going to maintain a twenty-first century moniker, uh, the start of us moving forward, I think that that, that resource needs to be available. And I'm not talking about the crockets, because that's a whole other conversation, but I'm talking about, uh, uh, city and how we perform in making sure that everybody has the adequate resources in their area. Thank you.
On a new business? As soon as you finish up. Any other, any, not some new business? Now, this new business, we're just gonna make sure that this afternoon, we had a discussion, um, which we will follow in two weeks regarding what's going on on Western Avenue in terms of the situation, um, that some of the, um, migrant workers having to be housed, um, as the location got across from the McDonald's, um, on, at the old, I forgot, the old Gatsby Home that was there.
Carl Home?
Party?
Carl Land.
Carl Land, that's the home. And, um, which is causing great concern and, um, we will be having a joint of public safety and zoning and activation meeting in two weeks to discuss that. Uh, I asked, um, I'm already asked members of the councils to take a tour to, to, um, to look at that situation and to go find out, ask our mayor and the administration to also drive by that situation because it's becoming an extreme problem. Um, as we noted, again, it was on certain sides of the city, probably where it was being cleared up and people are starting to really get concerned and having issues. So, I would ask the administration, the line of our council, to go and visit and to address it and so we need to make a clear plan on how we are going to positively address these issues in the future, both now and in future situations.
So, do you have a meeting on the twenty-third or a different?
No, the meeting will be on the twenty, uh, or you think it's, I think it's on the twenty-third. Oh, I don't, we're controlled to be in the court, uh, girl.
You know, my, I was actually making a suggestion, so we have one outside the council because I think this is a larger issue. And the reason why I think it's a larger issue is because of, I spoke with Captain Taco earlier today. She expressed to us that she has been trying to talk to INS, INS about getting them to participate and they have been, um, they, they haven't been welcoming to participate in this. Uh, I don't know if that causes, uh, Mayor Booty Judge's office to write INS a letter or the, uh, the federal government perhaps about our issues that we're having here, uh, with this particular migrant worker, uh, issue. However, I think it, it calls us for that type of action because I think that what's going on, there is public safety matter and as, as migrant workers are stated to be, there could be some people who are undocumented, I've heard those words used, or illegal. They're human beings at the end of the day and I just don't want them to be, be viewed as slaves, you know, in Indiana, especially on my side of town. So, I think that that calls for us to have a, a more of a proactive approach with the federal government.
Questions, everybody, that, um, availability because of scheduling, what, uh, things coming up. Um, we typically, the month, next Monday is already full, the following Monday at the council. Uh, if I could, I would, uh, I will leave this to a Wednesday.
Well, we can, I, I will check in, in regards to human, follow up with all the other immigration, uh, human activities, I guess, and I would give a few in probably the week, possibly the week of the twenty-third, somewhere in that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, just the suffering and all, all that stuff.
Okay.
And if you have other media, then we can have a little bit of that.
And also, if I could, uh, President Dieter?
Yes, sir.
We had heard that, um, it was noted during the committee meeting today that there are nine sites that are experiencing this particular issue, we could have a list of those sites, so.
Six sites.
Six sites.
Six sites, okay. Thank you.
That our problem's not necessarily this.
You're not, not, not at this level, but.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, any other new business anybody wants to talk about tonight?
Two, alright.
This is the floor, anybody wants to talk to us at this time on something we did not talk about? You have three minutes, we need to name and address.
This is the floor. Anybody wants to pass this at this time, or something we did not talk about? You have three minutes, and you can name and address. First district, council member Tim Scott will time you. Go ahead.
Diana Shalagi, uh, seven zero nine pushing. Um, since the discussion of the W E M W E utilization board came up tonight, um, I attended a meeting of the St. Joseph Community Forum of Economic Development, and there were a number of us that, uh, work with not-for-process within the community, and, um, one of our goals is to try to get as many minority businesses and women's businesses involved, uh, with these services that will be offered so that they can qualify, uh, to do business. Um, the board has not, the W B E M W E utilization board has not been posting their meetings or their times or where their meetings are publicly, and this was a bone of contention with the rest of us. Um, we cannot, we feel that we were not involved with some of the discussions that took place, and there were a number of community people that were interested in the formulation of the policies, um, particularly since some of us work with, uh, minority, uh, communities. Um, and so, we are asking that the pu- that the meetings be posted publ- publicly somewhere so that we can know when the meetings are and so that we can bring those that we feel would be qualified and could use these services.
Okay, thank you. If you would get a form?
We want to give updates before we get down there.
All the meetings are posted, uh, in the county city building lobby because they do not have a regular office in this building. They are also posted outside of the informal meeting room, if they're on the fourth floor or if they're on the tenth, thirteenth floor and on the, uh, uh, I think there's a, uh, Bolton Board, which is right there, uh, but I know that they have been posted.
I would like to add to that, just for clarification, is that, that was two areas that we heard very loud and clear from various community groups and individuals, and, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, work is currently underway, it's not that, uh, meetings will be posted, there will be a link to the website, minutes of the previous, uh, board's decisions and actions will now appear on the website. And I think if I'm not mistaken, um, Mr. Neal, is that currently, when would that be done?
The work that you got, I think's already posted.
Okay. You can go directly to the website now. And that recommendation came from a, um, meeting, and, um, you know, we move as quickly as possible. You are correct. You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? She knows. I want to return.